Hi, this is Pat McDonald, your host for Vote for Vermont, where our tagline is "Listening Beyond the Soundbite." I'm once again alone in the studio. The boys are somewhere, who knows? But anyway, my guest today is Erica Bundy Reddick, who is an independent candidate for Burlington City Council. This is the first time we've interviewed somebody for the council, and I'm very excited about it. Welcome.
Thank you.
Long stretch here.
Thank you, thank you.
Because we said we'd give the Florida candidates, so if you're interested, come on. And Burlington plays such an important part in Vermont's economy and just being there for shopping. And as stores, I love it. But can you share a little bit with our viewers of who you are and your background and why you want to jump in?
Yeah, that's my name, well, again, Erica Reddick. My background, I'm born and raised in Vermont, had the pleasure and privilege to get to move to Texas about 10 years ago, kind of see a different way of doing politics and government. And then my husband and I moved to Los Angeles because he's a filmmaker, so seeing the polar opposite of Texas. And then moving back to Vermont and seeing that Vermont is going the way of California and how that has really decimated the economy of that state and how much it's harmed people, it really sort of spurred this desire to try to make a difference. And so when we, you know, we moved back here to by my grandparents' house in Burlington, started to see how convoluted the regulatory environment is here, started learning more about what was going on in the government and things like that, and I just said, you know, I can't not say something. If no one else in Burlington is willing to stand up and say what is true and what is right, then I'm going to.
Good for you.
Thanks.
Well, that council is in the news a lot for a variety of different reasons. But it's a very active council.
Yes.
I guess the structure is mayor-council, right? It's a mayor-council sort of thing. So what's the role of the mayor? Does he report to the council? Or what's the relationship there?
Actually, it's really interesting. And I'm learning more and more about what historically had to take place for Burlington to essentially become a little mini dictatorship. So the mayor, as an example, has control or a say over the fire department, who the fire chief is, the police chief in the fire department. So most cities across the country, as an example, the police chief does not report to the mayor. He is another elected official. He is appointed by the council or some other body, police commission, something like that, so that that position is not used for political purposes, which it often is in Burlington, unfortunately. Same with the fire department, with the public safety tax we'll talk about later. And the city council, interestingly enough, should be able to, and theoretically does have the ability, to override the mayor's initiatives, to veto his budget and do things like that. But they don't. So the mayor may be a Democrat, but he's very much a progressive. And so is much of the council. And what happens is, not only is the council overrepresented by progressives, the mayor is a progressive. He then gets to appoint these very large and important other department heads. And additionally, then, the city council and the mayor get to approve who goes on the commissions. So all the commissions and committees are overrepresented and almost completely staffed or filled, I don't know what the right word is, by progressives.
Not much balance.
No balance, no balance at all. And so in a city that talks a lot about diversity and the need for diversity and inclusion, that does not include conservatives or Republicans. We don't need that kind of diversity in Burlington, apparently.
Love it. So that's a good time to my next question because I read in several different places, you're a conservative libertarian, said so in the print, but I don't know if that's... Running as an independent, but you were also included in the list of ag-Republican candidates, which is something John Clark had started with the people that he's recruited to run, which I must give him credit for. There was about 11, when you were at that event at the State House, there was about 11 new people, never involved in politics, who he got to jump in, which I think is great.
It is.
How does that all blend together to make you who you are?
That's a great question. And I was misquoted as saying I'm a conservative libertarian. What I said was I'm a liberal conservative.
Oh.
And that's not your fault.
That makes sense, I did read it.
I know. Well, I commented on the article and I said, hey, you misquoted me. Because I think when you say conservative in Vermont, that means a lot of things. And unfortunately, I think our national politics has sort of muddied the waters in local politics, unfortunately. People have a lot of opinions about what's going on nationally. I understand. But those things don't, not that they don't affect us locally, but to me, you know, what's going on at the White House and in the legislature, if we're going to talk about local elections, we need to talk about what are the local issues and what are people's stances on the local issues? Because that's what we have control over here. So I say, I joke and I say I'm a liberal conservative because, like most Vermonters, I was raised that you don't care about what goes on behind closed doors. You know, it is not my business who you choose to sleep with, who you're in love with, whatever, as long as you're not hurting other people or me or encroaching on my constitutional rights, you do you, I'm gonna do me, you know, as they say. And that's, and that's how it should be. You know, that's how I was raised with those values and that's how I think it should be. So now, in order to maintain that liberalism, you have to be a conservative. You have to value freedom of speech, freedom of assembly, Second Amendment rights that protect all of the other rights. If you don't value the constitutional basis of this republic, then you don't actually value those liberal ideas. Because without them, you don't get to say what you want. You don't get to say what you think. You know, if you are, as an example, if you are somebody who thinks that all conservatives are racist, sexist, homophobic bigots...
You missed a few. I had a look when I heard the diatrop that they use. I actually had to look a word up because I didn't know it.
It's true.
Yeah.
And so conservatives will fight for you to insult us. We will fight for you to say horrible things about us because we believe that it is your right in the public square to say what you believe to be true. But they won't do that. They won't do that. They're gonna fight and try to tell you that whatever you say is hate speech if they don't like it. And then you will be shunned from the public square. And now, in Burlington particularly, Vermont generally, but Burlington particularly, there's no freedom of assembly. There's no freedom of speech. There's none of that. Because if you do...
Why do you say no freedom of assembly or speech? Do you have examples?
Oh, I could, oh, I could give you 100 examples. But the most recent one that you'll find on WCAX and stuff like that was, there's a group called, I think it's called Gender Integrity. I've tried to find more information. I tried calling the mayor's office. I tried calling the library. I said, maybe I'm missing something that is going on with this group that I haven't been able to find, so I'm gonna give you the benefit of the doubt. Please tell me why they're so awful. So this group, Gender Integrity, wanted to have a meeting at the Fletcher Free Library, a publicly funded place.
Open to the public, right.
Okay. So they wanted to have a meeting to discuss their concerns about trans rights. The woman in charge, first of all, oh my God, I can't remember her name. I think it's like Lehrer or something is her last name, is a lesbian, a feminist, a hardcore feminist lesbian. Okay? So she's like supposedly included in this progressive group. So she wanted to have a conversation about trans rights overtaking women's rights and the loss of protected spaces for women with things like the Equality Act and stuff like that. Part of the other concern that she wanted to discuss and just talk about, because these are really hard questions that we have to wrestle with as a community. She wanted to talk about the legislation that they're trying to lower the age where you can transition. So start taking hormones, get gender reassignment surgery and all that. So they want to lower the age from 21.
To what?
I think 18.
Oh, okay.
Which, I mean, this is a major, major life decision. I don't know a lot of 18-year-olds who make good decisions.
Right.
Period. Let's be real. I did dumb stuff when I was 18. I think we all did. And I'm not saying that transitioning is dumb. I'm just saying that when you are gonna make a life-altering decision, that comes with health consequences and all kinds of things.
It's not a decision you can easily reverse.
Exactly.
And say, just kidding, you know, I've done this for a year or two and...
Now I want to go back?
You gotta make sure that is who you are.
So they got so much pushback and they were bullied so badly that they canceled the meeting.
Oh, that's terrible.
And now the woman won't respond to any inquiries from anyone to ask questions about what happened.
I was gonna say that just today, there's several women's families who, it was high school kids who ran in a race with several transgender women who are men. And of course, all the men won the races.
Of course.
And the women were a little upset about it because they're, which I didn't think about, they were losing out on college scholarships.
Scholarships, potential to go on to higher levels, even not in college, exactly.
Right. And so they filed a lawsuit today, which I thought was interesting.
I think that we all, I shouldn't say we all. I want to be compassionate, and I am. If we're in a one-on-one conversation, I'm gonna treat you with the same dignity and respect as I would treat anyone. Because every human being deserves to be treated with dignity and respect. We don't have to argue that. No one, I know there are probably some really terrible people who would argue that, but we're not talking about that. We're talking about good, kind-hearted people who are concerned, who are afraid for their own rights to be taken away, who are afraid for their own privileges to be taken away. Women and young girls get to learn how to fight, how to take care of their bodies, how to, I mean, literally. One of the reasons that boys benefit from being able to wrestle and do things like that is because they learn how to fight and control their own power. So when little girls, this, I've told people this forever. You want, you want to stop sexual harassment? You want to stop girls from getting raped and sexually assaulted and all those things? Put every single little girl in a taekwondo class.
There you go.
Or a Krav Maga or something like that. Teach them how to use their weight. Teach them how to fight for themselves. Teach them the confidence and the courage to defend themselves. And we won't have nearly the problems that we do with the gender, you know, issues. Because women will have learned how to take care of themselves, how to compete, that they're capable. Women learn those things, just like boys do, from competition, from sports. And if you set up a scenario where now women and girls are having to compete against biological boys, you have now eliminated their ability to have the same benefit that the boys do.
That's an interesting, I love the way you're looking at this issue. I'm going to steal it. No, that's really, I hadn't looked at it that way. That's, that's great.
It is. And I'm a little bit nervous to talk about it even because...
But it makes sense.
This is one of those topics that if you say anything that is not outside, I mean, I will get ripped to shreds for this, for saying the thing that is obvious. And what happened out of that? They canceled their event. The Gender Integrity canceled their event because of the backlash. And then Councilwoman Freeman brought a resolution to city council. It wasn't pre-announced. It wasn't even read at the city council.
Oh, it wasn't warned?
Ooh. Condemning hate speech, condemning these people for even wanting to have a conversation about their fears and their concerns about their rights and their safe spaces and our children.
Now, see, I'm, my impression of Burlington is completely opposite than what you're just explaining. I think it's an open whatever, you know, whatever you want.
Sorry for interrupting.
No, no, that's okay.
It was. When I was growing up, I grew up in Milton, graduated high school in St. Albans, lived in Burlington in middle school. So I went to Lyman's Sea Hunt, graduated Champlain College, lived there and worked there since I was 18. Burlington was the place that everyone could go and let their freak flag fly, and it didn't matter. And everybody was welcome.
It was the charm of the place. You know, you'd walk down Church Street and you were surrounded by lots of different people and it was great.
I moved, when I moved to Austin, Texas, they have this, they have this little saying. It says, "Keep Austin weird." And I was like, I'd look around and be like, y'all have clearly never been outside of Texas because if you think this is weird, you have no idea. Come to Burlington or San Francisco or something and see. And that is, and that was the beauty of it. You know, growing up, we had a senator that was a Republican, a senator that was a Democrat, and a socialist independent as our representative. That was Vermont to me. And I used to brag to people, you know, I was raised that you vote for a politician based on the content of their character, not their genitalia, the color of their skin, or all of these immutable characteristics that we decided a long, a long time ago were not appropriate ways to judge people. And yet somehow, in the 10 years that I was gone, we flipped back to that. And now, your opinion only matters based on the color of your skin, the nature of your genitalia, who you choose to have sex with, and all of those other things.
And we don't even ask what you stand for, right? We don't ask those policy questions.
It doesn't matter.
Right.
It doesn't matter.
I'm right with you.
Yep, it's shocking to me.
So I may not be able to answer this question myself. What do you think? Because there's quite a few people running, I'm understanding. And there's a write-in for Kurt. And I know you, in one article I read, you said you weren't gonna run if Kurt was running. And so he said he wasn't running because he's doing this radio show or TV show.
Yep, it's a radio show.
A radio show. And so he would have to stop the show because of federal laws.
Right.
So he said, no. But now somebody's instigated a write-in campaign, which I don't, that's real, when you think about it, you can't really show the difference between you and he because you can't debate.
Nope.
So I don't, I don't know what I think about that. But anyways, my question was, what do you bring to the table that others don't? I know Matt Code is running. Do you know Matt Code?
In Ward 4?
Oh, I wonder, no, no, in, for the council, but maybe it's South Burlington. Never mind that comment. But what, how do you stand out from the others?
Oh, my goodness. I stand out wildly. And actually, it's really funny. We did our first candidate forum on CCTV, Channel 17, and I laughed after because Sarah Carpenter and I could not be more opposite. Every question, almost every question was about taxes and the economy. And, you know, do you support the tax increase? I said no to all of them. She said yes to all of them. She has spent her career, you know, I don't know a lot about her, so I don't mean to sound like I'm disparaging because I'm sure she's a lovely woman. But her career has been spent figuring out how to spend taxpayer dollars, how to get more in taxpayer funding, how to get more out of the government in order to redistribute that wealth. I have spent my career helping businesses grow and thrive, avoid bankruptcy.
You're an accountant by trade, right? And you have your own business?
I do.
Yeah.
Yep. I have an accounting consultancy called I Love Your Money.
I love it, that's great.
And, you know, what I do is work with small to medium-sized businesses, often who spent a few years trying to save money by having their mother-in-law do their bookkeeping.
Oh, right.
You know? And now it's, it's three years later and they can't get funding because it says they have negative $500,000 in accounts receivable and they can't figure out why.
Thanks, Mom.
Yeah, and it's like, okay, yeah, you probably don't owe your clients a half a million dollars. I mean, this was an actual thing that happened.
Oh, really?
Oh, yes, oh, yeah. So, you know, a lot of times it's, QuickBooks bills itself as this great software that anybody can use. But if you don't have a bachelor's degree in accounting, if you don't understand debits and credits, if you don't understand the economy and taxes and business regulations, it doesn't matter how easy the buttons are to push. So I work with a lot of folks, like I have one client in particular. We started working together. He had two employees. He used no time management software. He had no idea how long his projects were taking. He was nearly bankrupt. Five years later, he has 10 employees, you know, a nice chunk of change in the bank that will be buying his own office space with...
Reinvesting, excellent.
Exactly. Just completely turned around. And that's what I really love to do.
That's great.
It's really fun.
Well, that would be an asset to Burlington. Challenge, though. What are you doing?
Yes.
You're getting your money's worth out of it.
I really often ask myself, I'm like, and this is, this is totally rude and I know it is, but every time I go to city council and I see like the housing initiatives and things like that, I'm like, do you guys not do math? This is basic addition and subtraction. I'm not sure why you think any of this stuff is a good idea. And I think that, I think that we have a council and a mayor who are compassionate.
Yes, that is true, right.
And they care about people. What seems to be missing is the ability to regulate and say no and be realistic about what's possible and what's not. So we want to help everyone, right? And I learned this term, it's called pathological compassion, right? So we just want to be nice to everyone and we want to do everything that we can and we want everybody to be okay. And that is an awesome goal. I love that goal. But you can't, but you have to pay for it. You have to pay for it. And so, well, we'll get to the next. I'll let you ask the next question.
No, that's okay. Are people leaving Burlington as they are in the rest of the state? Have you had those numbers? I'm just curious about that.
I actually don't know the numbers off of the top of my head, but Chittenden County is the only place that's growing.
Growing, well, because there's opportunity there so people can make the money to pay the taxes.
It's the only place with jobs. It's the only place, I shouldn't say the only place. I know that's hyperbole. But it's one of the, other than the Northeast Kingdom, which I think still has some good manufacturing gigs and stuff like that. It's the only place that is, has an industry to support people. Now, that being said, we aren't growing as much as we might be if the state weren't struggling so much. And in fact, part of the reason that we are having an exodus of people is because of Burlington. So, you know, as goes Burlington, so goes the rest of the state. Or as goes Chittenden County, so goes the rest of the state. So when you have, this, this is another way I can point out the difference between Sarah and Kurt and I. Sarah, in the candidate forum the other, last week, said, you know, we need to have the state redo the housing, or excuse me, the education funding because we have special issues here in Burlington that they don't have in the rest of the state and we need more money.
Sign them up.
Right? Sounds good.
Yeah, right.
Right? Except that that education funding, that increase in education funding comes from the rest of the state. So Burlington has made decisions to strangle its economy so that we don't have enough money. Burlington has made decisions to bring low-income people who have to be taken care of with social welfare services. Burlington has made these decisions that have created the problems and now expect the rest of the state to pay for it. So poorer communities like Fletcher and Westford or whoever, we have the gall to expect them to pay our bills when it's our own fault that we're struggling financially?
Yes.
I don't know how you justify that.
I like this, keep, keep talking. Because the one thing I got involved in, in the legislature was cleanup of Lake Champlain. There was a lot of people who said that's Burlington's problem. Let them pay. And I'm, I'm one of the, in this particular instance, because I agree with what you said, the lake has such an impact on us, the state, from an economy perspective, that I think the rest of the state should pitch in and help clean. Because the lake, the lake is so important to all of us.
Agreed.
Even if it's not in my backyard and I can't see it, but it's close enough. And it attracts people and so that, you can, you can quote me, but I, that's the one I would share in because if we don't clean that lake up, I think we're doomed.
Well, and that's actually an interesting conversation, too. I recently learned that part of the reason we're having such a hard time with phosphorus, there was a federal program early in the 20th century where the federal government was telling farmers to put phosphorus on their land. So now, so now we're punishing farmers and putting them out of business for something that's actually the federal government's fault.
Exactly, yep.
And so I have a conversation with people a lot about our relationship with the federal government. Because as you may know, Vermont is a state that gets more in federal funds than we give. So we get more in grants and things like that than we actually contribute to the general fund. So we are a receiver state, is what they say. And so I've spoken to a lot of legislators and people like Sarah who would say, well, we have all this money. We get all this federal grant. We need to be able to, whatever. Those come with costs and consequences later down the road. I would be willing to bet you any money that that phosphorus program came with some other benefit. We had to contribute something. It probably meant something. And now decades later, we're suffering the consequences for being willing to take that handout.
Very few people remember that, the federal government and phosphorus. And when we were having the discussion around the state, you'd bring it up and they'd be like, what?
Exactly.
It's the farmer's fault. We can fix it.
Exactly. And it's just, people are not willing to learn history before they make their decisions. And, and I would just pose again, the fact that Vermont gets more federal funds than we give is our fault. It's our fault. It's our fault. So, we make laws that cause businesses to leave, we raise taxes so that people leave, we raise the regulatory burdens so that building anything costs you $100,000 in Act 250 permits before you've even started.
Right.
And then, so Vermonters, or our legislature, is the reason that Vermont is poor, and then we have the expectation, because we want it to be green, or we want whatever, and then we have the gall to tell the rest of the country that it's their responsibility to subsidize our way of life.
That's great.
That's crazy to me.
And they don't get it, the legislators.
No, no.
Where do you see the new Act 250 bill that's just, that's gotten out of committee and is going over to, I think, maybe House GOPs or Ways and Means, and then to the Senate? It's just a dandy, couple hundred pages, it's great.
It's cra, and that's what, so Vermonters, in addition to our legislature, city council, Burlington residents actually believe, whether they realize it or not, that it is the rest of the country's responsibility to pay for us to have clean air and water and all of that stuff, not ours. And that is just a very immature way of thinking about money.
Well, that's sort of the same, as you're saying, it's sort of the same thing where a lot of people think the government should take care of us, you know, right here in Vermont, "Well, they should take care of us, rather than let me work and contribute."
And take care of myself, take care of my family.
Same outwork, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, not in my family. I talked to somebody the other day, "I've been working since 1964, if you figure that out, that's a long time." So, tell me, I've read a couple of things, but what is your main, the main focus? I'm running on the platform, whether it's schools, taxes, I don't know how much you're involved in the opioid crisis, but...
Yeah. So, schools, taxes, well, schools as it relates to taxes.
Yes, right.
Local control, for sure, but tax, property tax relief, property tax reform, stimulating the economy, and public health and safety.
Ah.
And public health and safety actually doesn't get a lot of attention, because everything has been so focused on the economy and taxes, but also partially because without the money to pay for public safety...
Yes, you can't do much, right, right.
So, everything really starts with a foundation of a strong economy, where we have good businesses that provide good jobs with multiple layers of pay and experience needed. You know, we want the executives that get paid a couple hundred thousand dollars or more, but then we need the, the blue collar workers, we need the entry-level jobs for our teenagers, and are those right out of college, things like that. So, we need a good, robust business environment, so that people want to do business here. When we bring that economic activity back, we'll have the tax base we need to lower taxes and pay for things like public safety.
And you may save on guns, because one of your council people proposed no guns, there's a savings right off the top. I was really impressed with that, I went, "Oh, my goodness."
Well, and what's wild is, at the same time, they want to disarm the police and disarm the populace with gun laws, they're also releasing violent criminals.
Yeah, right, exactly.
They're not locking up, you know, I don't know if you know this, but I had someone share an experience with me, a police officer, who had arrested someone for domestic violence, this is in Burlington.
Yep.
Had arrested someone for domestic violence, they pick him up, they bring him in, call the judge, "Hey, we picked up so-and-so, we gotta," you know, whatever. Judge says, "No custody, release them, have them show up to court tomorrow." So, he's just beating his girlfriend.
Right, oh.
Gets released, immediate, same night. Goes back same night, beats her up again, get the cops called again, they pick him up again, bring him down. Call the same judge, "Hey, Judge, we just picked him up again, he beat her up again, what's up?" Judge says, "No, no, no, let him go, more conditions." He goes back a third time.
Oh, my God.
Nearly kills her.
Whoa.
This time, we'll remand him to custody.
What a great guy.
But this idea that like, "Oh, everybody, we're not gonna, we're gonna decarcerate violent criminals," because, so, so you're gonna release violent criminals on the street, you're gonna make it so the police can't do their job, and I'm not allowed to protect myself either?
Right.
What, how is that anything other than insanity?
Did you go to the, the jail discussion over at, from VT Digger?
Unfortunately, I did not get to attend.
Well, it's on, it's on, you've gotta watch it, it's on, it's on VT Digger's, the whole thing. One of, one of them, who's Shara Mayne, because I'm gonna do a show on this, said that in domestic violence, if the person kills the partner, chances are he will never reoffend again. So, you had to be there. So, because the whole audience is clapping, except for me and the, the two friends on either side of me, and we were just sitting there going, "What?" Because they, and, and you should never lock up women because they've, they've been abused and they've, you know, never mind what they did to their kid.
So, I'm gonna...
You should go listen to that one, that's a dandy.
So, one of the reasons that public health and safety and this whole thing is so important to me, is because I'm a recovering addict. I'll celebrate 11 years sober in March.
Congratulations, seriously.
Thank you, thank you very much. I, having actually been a drug addict and understanding what is required to get well...
Right.
And having worked very closely with other addicts to help them get sober, this idea that everyone is just the victim of society, and that with a little therapy, people will stop human trafficking, people will stop harming each other, people will stop whatever, is baseless and completely unfounded.
Right.
I, I literally do not understand and cannot comprehend where this idea comes from. Because if you ask anyone in recovery, anyone who was a criminal and got reformed, absolute, there is not a single one who will say, "You know how I got better? By the society turning a blind eye to what I did, allowing me to continue to terrorize people on the street, and tell me that I'm just the victim and that nothing is my responsibility."
Because he had a bad childhood.
No one is...
They've got beat up and blah, blah, blah.
No one has ever gotten well that way. And I can tell you for a fact that no one ever will. Because the way that you, as a recovering addict, or a criminal, somebody who's been in jail and all these other, the way that you earn your dignity back is by taking responsibility for what you've done.
Right.
No one gets better any other way. You have to hit rock bottom. You can't have people telling you that it's okay to sleep in other people's yards and in their places of business, you can't tell people that it's okay to behave badly, you can't tell people that they get to commit human trafficking, trespassing, theft, and all of those things, and that they're just the victim of society and expect them to get well. You have, they have to hit rock bottom, which normally includes some kind of interaction with the police, or something like that, to get smacked awake.
Well, what kills me about the police these days is they are almost asking that instead of being law enforcement, that they're being social workers.
Social workers.
I mean, I had a, I, here at the studio, we did an eight-part series on opioids, that treatment, prevention, and enforcement wellness, and the, the law enforcement people we had on here is like, they, they don't want us to enforce the law, they want us to be social workers and, and confront the issues right there and then.
And that's not what they're trained to do.
For sure.
That is not what they're trained to do. And frankly, to be perfectly honest, I don't want the police to care about my feelings. I want them to care about my safety.
There you go.
I want them to make sure that I'm okay. And if I'm a danger to myself and others, I want them to be responsible for that. If I am a danger to myself and others, please save me from myself.
There you go.
And if that means arresting me and throwing me in jail, which for me personally, that is what happened.
Right, ah.
That was the beginning of me getting to see that the way that I was living was not working.
Right.
But I, like many Vermonters, grew up, or were living in a place where we were losing our ability to make jobs, there's, you don't see the opportunity to raise a family and afford things, you don't have a lot of hope.
Right, right.
And then, unfortunately, some of us have bad things that happen to us. So, as an example, my personal experience, I was drugged and sexually assaulted in my early twenties. And that led to a lot of not-good emotional issues, as you would imagine. And that definitely contributed to me turning to drugs and alcohol to deal with the pain and the suffering that was caused by that. But, I will never in a million years tell you that it was because of that that I became a drug addict and an alcoholic. It's not because of that that I committed a crime and had to suffer the consequences. It was because I didn't have... I'm gonna restate that.
Mm-hmm.
I've had a lot of bad things happen to me in my life.
Not sure how to respond, but I'm very sorry for all this.
But it doesn't make me a victim.
Well, you can sense that, just hearing you talk.
Because as, as a grown person, you know, maybe when I was a teenager and I got bullied so badly that I had to drop out of high school my senior year...
Oh, wow.
I would have thought of myself as a victim back then. When I got drugged and sexually assaulted, and then revictimised by the judicial system, I probably would have told you I was a victim back then. Any number of bad things that have happened to me in my life, I could choose to see myself as a victim and use that as an excuse for bad behavior.
Mm-hmm.
And I did, for a long time, because I was told that I was a victim.
That you're the victim, right.
And when you tell people that you're a victim, that they're a victim, you take away their agency to change their lives and to get better. And if at any point in that period of time, I'd had a guidance counselor or someone else, instead of saying, "Erica, you are a victim, you should wallow in self-pity and feel awful about yourself." If somebody had at any point said to me, "Erica, you are not a victim, and here's why, here's how you can turn this around, here's what that looks like." I needed a mentor in my life to help guide me and shape those things. I didn't need the government telling me that I was a victim, and that I didn't have to take responsibility for myself. And it wasn't until I had someone who was willing to be that mentor. It wasn't until I got smacked down by my drug addiction, it wasn't until I had to fully suffer the consequences of the choices I had made, that I got to make a different decision.
And now look at you, very impressive, seriously.
Thank you.
I, I, I'm not sure, I, I've never had, thank you, never had any of these experiences, because I think my father would have killed me, so there you go. We just, we just ended it, Dad. But I, I've lived, I have lived a very shelter, I've been out in the public and worked for state government, but for some reason, I've just been in this little bubble. And some of the things that people say to me, I'm like, "What?" I just, I listen and I try to understand, but it's hard sometimes, because you haven't, thank God, experienced it, but I give you a lot of credit.
Well, and the best we can do is, is be empathetic.
Yep.
And of course, I make the joke all the time, that everyone in Burlington and our legislature basically has to go to Al-Anon, and I'm probably not supposed to say that on, like, public television or whatever, but what is missed about people struggling with drug addiction and alcoholism is that you can't save them.
Unless they want to be saved, right?
Right. You cannot, it doesn't matter how much money you throw at the problem, it, they have to decide for themselves. So, by, as an example, by letting people just sleep on the street and in the foyers of buildings, and, and really decimating what is left of the economic activity in Burlington, you lower the bottom. And so, they have to get even worse and fall even further before they have that moment where they wake up.
Right.
And so, if, if people could just understand that what they believe is compassion is actually more harmful, I think we could start to see something different.
Now, you must see, along with all of that, we had a, a, who does politics, you know, always talking about politics, giving his insight into it, and I asked him on the show, I said, "What's, what do you see in Vermont as the worst thing that we're gonna be dealing with?" And he said homelessness, which really, speaking of the bubble, I was like, "What are you talking about?" And he said homelessness, because it's also food insecurity, mental illness, it's all wrapped up into one, which, which is about, if somebody's got a roof over their head and a place to live and feel safe, which is what you're talking about.
And they can take care of their family, have enough to do, be a part of a community, be together.
So, he said that's what he sees in our future that is just gonna be devastating.
Absolutely. And the, and the policies that are being followed and pushed just make it worse.
Huh.
All you have to do is look at Los Angeles, Portland, Austin, so, lived in Austin, Texas, lived in Los Angeles.
I, I can't imagine what it really looks like, I'm, I'm appalled by the pictures. So, to actually see it, and the, speaking of the police, they're going in and having to work with these folks.
And being a part of the recovery community for 11 years, and going to these homeless encampments, praying for people, bringing them food, bringing them things, when you allow homeless encampments, you are creating a place for disease at minimum.
Right.
Okay, the, the least bad thing, there's a typhus outbreak in, in Los Angeles, for God's sake.
Which we haven't seen in hundreds of years, right?
Like, I'm trying, when I start talking about this, I get super excited, I'm just like, "Ah!", because it makes me crazy.
It's so obvious, why don't they...
It's, and, not, not only that, but you set up a circumstance for people to be victimized.
Right.
Because this is, women are getting raped and sexually assaulted rampantly, so are men.
Yeah.
You know, so, men and women are being raped and sexually assaulted, they're being sex trafficked, they're selling themselves.
And there must be kids in that mix. That would just, ugh, I'd be adopting them all.
And so, so again, this, this pathological compassion...
Right.
That, I'm not saying that arresting mentally ill people is awesome. I'm not saying that arresting drug addicts and putting them in jail is awesome or super effective, but what we're doing is not working.
Right.
And I would love to see something like what Rhode Island has, which is essentially like work camps.
Yes, they were talking about that the other night.
Which sounds awful, and are not great, and have their own problems, for sure. We are human beings.
Right.
And we screw stuff up. That is all there is to it.
Give them some kind of trade, give them counseling while they're in there, don't just put them in the, in the cell and close the door.
There's an awesome organization in South, it's located in South Burlington called Working Fields, so too, I'm gonna plug, if that's okay.
Yeah, please.
Working Fields is a staffing agency, the executive director's name is Mickey Wiles. He is, you, if you can, I mean, I know it's not politics, but awesome...
We do a lot of shows, not politics, because I find them interesting.
Awesome guy, awesome organization, they work to help drug addicts and ex-cons get jobs.
Right.
Because you know how people stay sober?
You what?
When they have a purpose!
Yes, right.
And they have dignity and integrity. So, they are working with local employers, Vermont employers, all across the state, to staff, to get people in recovery into jobs, and to be that foundation for them to get well. Love it, love Mickey, they're awesome. And then, in Burlington, you have a new place, the executive director is Kevin Pounds, and it's a homelessness shelter.
Ah.
So, they have a long-term program on North Street, and then he's now also, they're also in charge of the Low Barrier Shelter. And their whole thing is about what, it's not just giving them a bed.
Right.
It's having recovery coaches, helping them get jobs. They have a whole program that you can go through, it's like six months to a year, and they even help you get apartments at the end and the whole thing.
That's great, that's great.
So, I have, I'm actually working with a new place, because I have a triplex in Burlington, and I told them, "When I have an opening, I would like to consider renting to one of your people."
Super, right.
Because I had people who were willing to invest in me and give me a second chance at my life, so that I got to be sitting here today.
Pay it forward.
Exactly.
Good for you.
Love those organizations.
So, we have, looking at the time, and I wanna, I wanna focus a little bit on the council.
Yes, yes.
And all of the, I, I made a list of, I know, I sent it to you, of all the stuff you've got going on in Burlington, I'm sure I've just, I've just touched the surface. But, people, when you go around, when you have that, what they call it, livability forums, they had about four or five of them, right? Have you done yours yet, or...
I, I attended one.
Yep.
I attended one of them.
And so, what are people saying are their issues? What, what do the, what does, some of them didn't look too well-attended, but that's always the way it is when you're campaigning.
Well, yeah.
It's, it's hard to get people out.
Yes.
So, but what are the folks that did you, what were they saying?
Well, now, are you talking about our candidate forums, or are you talking about the housing summit?
No, 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 the candidate forums.
Oh, okay.
Because the council supported that, and it looked like they had just a couple of candidates in this one and this one, because you're from, you, I think you mentioned Ward Four.
Yes.
Which is really the North District.
Yes, so we are the, the west side of North Avenue, or the lake side of North Avenue is Ward Four. So, we have just had the one candidate forum, and almost every single question, I think, with the exception of one silly one that I can remember, somebody asked me if I was related to Ted Bundy.
Oh, stop.
I was like, I was so excited when I married my husband to take his last name, and I was like, "I'm never gonna hear these stupid jokes ever again." But it's, whatever. But every single question was about the economy and taxes.
Now, that, that, see, that's, that's where we've experienced statewide, and do you think when they get to the legislature, they've all heard the same thing from their constituents, and we do just the opposite?
I actually, I kind of yelled at one of my city councilors, and I, after the last, one of the last city council meetings, where they voted to put the, I think it was the public, the Burlington Housing Trust Fund on the ballot, city council voted to go ahead and put it on the ballot. And I went to Franklin Polino after, who's the North District City Councilor, and I said, "You know, you come to all these meetings and you say, 'I hear you, we hear you, I hear you.'" All of them say that.
Right.
All of them say it.
Don't do anything.
But then you still vote for the thing that we tell you we can't afford.
Right.
So, you don't hear us.
Right.
And you don't actually care what we want or we need.
They hear, they don't listen, I think that's a, they don't compute.
Exactly.
One ear and out the other.
And I think that Councilman Ali Zhang, Ward Seven, was the only one who voted against it.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And he and I disagree on tons of stuff.
Yeah.
But he listened. And I was like, "That's the only one of you that actually listened to your people."
Really? So, and what is your, what, who are your people, what is your ward consist of, what is, because I think in Burlington, I've noticed, there's cultural, there's cultural components here and here and here, and I, I'm assuming every ward has got a little nuance and, and different than the other wards.
Yes, the New North End is very different than the rest of the city, in that it's primarily owner-occupied, single-family homes.
Right.
So there's obviously duplexes and, you know, triplexes, some apartment buildings and apartment complexes, but not nearly to the extent that you have in the rest of the city. So we are primarily older Vermonters, so people who are retired on fixed incomes, young families, and, and that, I mean, that's pretty much the demographic of the New North End, for the most part.
Is that where the garden is or not? There used to be a, a garden where people could go and plant things, or is that somewhere else in the city?
I think there's multiples of them.
Oh, I see, okay.
I know there's one at the, at the trailer park.
Ah, okay.
Across from the Ethan Allen Shopping Center. I know there's one there.
Yeah.
But I think there's a few around the city.
Yeah, because they seem to have caught on, because, you know, it's fun to watch, plant something and then go home and eat it, how cool is that?
Exactly, and that's, I love, that's one of the values I, I tell people, like, my husband and my friends in Texas call me a food snob, because growing up here, our, so much of our food is grown locally, raised locally, exactly.
I love it.
And it's so much fresher and more delicious, and you just realize how important our local farms are and what that means to our community.
I love to go to a restaurant where you're reading eggs came from, you know, Erica Reddick's farm in Williston or something.
Exactly.
You're like, Dad, this is so cool.
Like, I'm supporting, not only am I, first of all, supporting and, and really creating local farms is, I, I don't, I don't know why progressives want to do anything that hurts our local farms, because what else helps with climate change than not having to transport our food from South America?
There you go, with who knows what they put on it.
Exact, all the chemicals and-
I won't buy them, because I think chemicals don't just stay on the outside, so you could, they actually go into the meat of the apple or whatever.
Exactly. We should really, I, I think rather than passing a bunch of legislation that is closing our family farms, we need to be supporting them as much as possible.
I agree with that. I had John Sales on here a couple of weeks ago, and he's from the Food Bank.
Yeah.
And they put this veggie truck together, and they go to schools with all kinds of vegetables that I think you can just take, they're, they're free, and there's people coming out of the woodwork to, to enjoy the fresh, the fresh fruit that he offers. It's incredible, he said.
Yep, I love that.
So you've got, in your little town, you have such things as sanctuary city, non-citizen voting, which, I don't know, I just struggle with that, I'm sure this is no surprise to my viewers. Where's your, where are you taking on that? That's already done, so it's sort of hard to undo if you are not crazy about it.
The sanctuary city part, yes. I, I find it very disappointing. And having just moved back from two states with the highest numbers of illegal immigrants.
Right.
And not just illegal immigrants, but crime caused by illegal immigrants. It's unfortunate that in a lot of these conversations, legal and illegal immigrants, illegal immigrants and criminal illegal immigrants, outside of having been here illegally, criminal, they all get conflated.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Right? So now, if you say anything about illegal immigrants and wanting to address safety, you're a racist and you're a whatever, right?
Homophobic, whatever.
Blah, 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 fill in the blank.
Right.
So, my nephew is a Border Patrol agent in South Texas.
Tell him, thank you.
So last year, when everybody was saying that there was no crisis at the border and passing sanctuary city laws and all this stuff, I was like, Matthew just told us a story about hundreds of people getting gunned down at a border checkpoint where he's stationed, near where he's stationed. So the, in Texas especially, I'll speak, because that's where my knowledge base is mostly, very porous border.
Sure, right.
Because people go back and forth to go to school, to go to work, it's very much like we have here with-
With Canada.
Quebec, exactly. Hundreds of people in line, waiting to go to school, waiting to go to work, all just murdered by the cartels.
Oh, wow.
And they run the border, the entire length.
Did we hear anything about that?
Not a single word.
Right.
But we can't talk about that.
Yeah.
We can't talk about the illegal immigrants that are coming into the country, who are MS-13 gang members, who are running drugs, who are human trafficking. We just had a human trafficking ring broken up in Burlington. A sex trafficking ring, actually.
Really?
For real, like actually, a sex trafficking ring was broken up in Burlington, Vermont.
Oh my God.
But we're not going to concern ourselves with the people who are committing human trafficking.
Right.
That just seems very irresponsible to me.
You're saying it so calmly. That's really outrageous.
It just is shocking, and I go, I, I think is, is it five, was it five out of the eight, nine eleven bombers were, had visa, had overstayed their visas?
Oh, yeah, right.
So, so I guess we've forgotten about, we forgot about that.
Well, I, my husband and I, it's a long story, and I don't want to waste any time, but we came through one of the, the border crossings that, a week later, some of the terrorists for the, for the World Trade Center came in, the same place we did. And the guy, oh, okay, go ahead, and I'm in my motorcycle with piles of stuff I bought, and I've got the black mask on, you couldn't even see whether I was red, blue, green, yellow, whatever, just passed me through.
Yeah.
And I, and I said to Bruce, that was the weirdest, doesn't, don't they ask questions? Don't they care?
Nope.
It's really bad.
Well, and just to point out, to be really clear, by and large, for the most part, ICE and immigration officials, when they were doing, as an example, when they would do raids in Texas, they weren't coming to find the illegal immigrant who, who came here to pick apples in, you know, in the fall.
Right.
They're looking for the people who have already been committed, or who have already committed a crime that the police have already dealt with.
Right.
Because that's how they know they're here. How else would they know they're here if not the cooperation of local law enforcement?
And that's pretty scary. We went, we were visiting my husband's son in, in Arizona, and we went through Nogales to, we were going by way of, you know, to Florida, so we went through, at nighttime. Whoa. Just when you look at the border and the dogs and, and you can see Mexico over there, it was a little eerie feeling.
It's wild, it's wild.
Listen, we have two minutes, and I want, I just would like you to talk to our audience and, you know, what you'd like to see happen to Berlin, what, Berlin, that's where I live, Burlington, what you, what you would bring to the table and hope to accomplish as your campaign, you know, stump speech.
Yes, and this is when I should address the camera.
This is your camera, right, exactly.
What I hope to accomplish in Burlington is a massive deregulation of buildings, zoning, of zoning is primarily. I want to see our economy opened up for the least among us to be able to survive. When taxes are so high and regulations are so high that you have to be wealthy or a huge business already to make it, that's not how we grow, that's not how we do better, and that's not how we keep young people, so that we can make sure that there is enough money to take care of our older people, which is a major issue that we're gonna, that we're already seeing here in Vermont and in Burlington. So deregulation as much and as widely as possible, encourage investment by locals and other folks, make sure that we can thrive and pay for all of the things that we need. I am happy to provide all of the social services, have all of the recovery beds that we need, rebuild Memorial Auditorium, deal with the Moran plant, I want to do all of those beautiful, wonderful, compassionate things that everyone talks about. And I'm going to do it by creating an economy that allows for us to pay for it ourselves rather than going into debt or expecting the rest of the state or the country to pay for it.
Bravo. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I wish you a lot of luck.
Thank you.
I heard that Moran plant, I'm like, still? Honestly, God, that, I, I started working in Burlington in ninety-one, that's the big topic back then.
It closed in the eighties! It closed in the eighties, for God's sake!
It's like every year, what are we going to do with the Moran plant?
And now, and the longer it goes, the worse it gets, the more the cost.
Listen, I bet you enjoyed this show, I certainly did, and I really want to thank our guests for coming, very exciting, we've got to watch Burlington. Thanks for listening, we'll see you next week, and in the meantime, keep listening beyond the sound bites.